You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 13th, 2024 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaportecounty.org.
Welcome, everybody, to the May Town Council meeting, Long Beach Town Council meeting. To those of you on Zoom, I want to apologize in advance. We've been having problems today with our Zoom equipment. Don't know if it's because of magnetic storms or... So if you cut out, we apologize. We're working on it. Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge. The pledge is to the United States of America, and to the government for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being created in the firstborn, and to all who live now. Meg, could you do local?
Sure.
President, is this working? President, Josh Smith?
Here.
Council members, Jake, Amy.
Here.
Anita Rentes.
Here.
And Kendra Bartlett and Shannon Bojekar absent. Chief Swistec.
Present.
Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. I have no opening remarks. Entertaining motion for approval of the council minutes for April 8th, 2024.
I make that motion to approve the minutes of April 8th, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes are approved.
Joey, can I interrupt? We also have Trista Hudson on Zoom, our council.
Okay. So, hi, Chris. Welcome.
Just so everybody knows, please.
Do we have any public comments? Want any public comments on Zoom? Scene nine? Any public comments in the audience? Scene nine? Okay. Committee reports, Police Department, Chief Swistec.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of April, Long Beach Police Department responded to 424 calls per service when compared to 271 in the previous year for an increase of 151 calls per service. During the month of April, 15 incident reports were documented. A total of six individuals were arrested. Two misdemeanor arrests related to operating motor vehicle while intoxicated. Two misdemeanor arrests for driving on a suspended driver's license. And one misdemeanor arrest for resisting law enforcement. And then also, we had one felony arrest, which was related to an individual that was arrested for operating motor vehicle while intoxicated with a previous conviction of the same. Aside from that, I have nothing of major concern to pass along from the Police Department, other than the fact that tonight, we have a very productive meeting, a joint meeting with the Long Beach Fire Department and the Long Beach Police Department, talking about summer activities, specifically lakefront emergencies related to any type of medical call, or a swimmer in distress, or a drowning call. The coordination on both departments is exceptional, and the communication is going quite well. So thank you to Long Beach Fire Department for prompting that meeting and taking the time to meet with us tonight. And unless there's any questions, we did not have a police commission meeting for the month of April either.
Thank you. Town Administration Chief?
Couple of things I'd like to cover tonight. In the last month, we've had some concerns about the recycling. We have a new vendor through the La Porte County Solid Waste District, which is Borden Recycling. It's taking the contract of work from Republic Recycling. Their contract started in January. For the first couple of months of 2024, recycling was going well in town. Then all of a sudden, there were a couple of neighborhoods, specifically near Chassleton, near Stop 22, near Ridge Road, Stop 28. Some of the homes were not receiving the same service as they were receiving in previous months, and they actually stopped picking up the recycling. Through a chain of emails and phone calls between my office, Solid Waste District, La Porte County Commissioner Joe Haney, La Porte County Council President Randy Novak, Kendra Bartlett, on behalf of the Town Council, was assisting as well, and they were able to make some end roads with Borden Recycling. They have assured us that starting tomorrow, recycling in town to the affected residents should resume to normal recycling. So anyone that's listening or anyone that's present tonight, if you have any concerns or issues with the recycling, please communicate them to the Town Hall. We now have a municipal contact at Borden. His name is Eric Ivory. Eric and I have exchanged phone numbers. We're communicating well, so I just wanted to share it with everyone. If you do have recycling concerns, please call us, and we will work through those. Stop 18, a couple of things I want to talk about there. It's related to our stormwater improvement project at Stop 17 and 18. Earlier this afternoon, Street Superintendent Tom Dolph, myself, and members of Hoss Engineering met at Stop 18 to look at the outfall from the stormwater infrastructure that was put in on Lake Shore Drive between Stop 17 and 18. Lake Shore Drive, the improvements that were made in the catch basins are working as designed and are picking up much more water than they have picked up in the past. We no longer find standing water in the areas that we did previously. We have before and after photos that were shared with the council that shows the improvements that were made there. So that engineering is fine, designed work. We're picking up much, much more water. The outfall, as the water is gathered on Lake Shore Drive and outfalls onto the lakefront, it goes through what we call a sorrel structure. That structure kind of cleans the water, picks up some of the particulates that are in the water, like say, a cigarette butt that someone might have thrown out, or other small materials and that. So we actually put that in to make sure that our town is doing the right thing for, you know, the EPA, more or less. To make sure that we're a good community, making sure we're cleaning our water before Washington discharge is out to the lakefront. As this water comes out of the stormpipe under the Stop 18 boardwalk, we have now found that there is some erosion that is going on, just because of the amount of water that's coming through there. It's not a design flaw or anything like that. It's just something that we're learning as the water is coming out, and we're going to need to make some modifications. So the modifications, engineers are working on that. I spoke to the Park Board President today with Zach Neff. Zach and I have been in communication, and I've spoke to the town officials, letting them know that Woodruff's Inhoss is working on an alternative to possibly change how the current boardwalk is laid out and making some upgrades to the boardwalk. Before the changes in the stormwater to 17 and 18, we were already having some erosion problems underneath the boardwalk. It was exposing some of the sand or two concrete supports that were there. So this isn't a new problem that we've created. It's just that we've kind of enhanced it a little bit with the amount of water that we're now bringing through that area. So we're working on some changes there. Hope to have those to the council within the next month. I just wanted to share that with everybody. And it is believed that we are obviously under the budgeted number for that project. And I hope that the estimates that come in for the changes to the wood on the boardwalk will still keep us under budget or at budget on that project, but more to come on that. I want to talk about a couple of events. I've handed out to those that are in the audience tonight. The June 5th, it's a Wednesday. It will be the open house for the new Public Safety Building. And we'll give an update on the Public Safety Building later in our agenda. But I just want to let everybody know that Long Beach community and the general public is cordially invited to attend the June 5th open house from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be food and beverage provided. Long Beach resident Whitfield and her company Reveal Global Events with Lime Light Catering has donated 100% all of the food and beverage to the event. It's estimated to be over $10,000 for them to come in and cater the event, and they're doing this as an in-kind donation to the town of Long Beach. So we're very thankful for that donation. And again, that would be June 5th. The information is also on the town's website, and we also sent out a mass email to the email group. May 25th, the Long Beach Police Department will have a Marine Patrol fundraiser that will be held at H&amp;S Landscaping on Highway 12. 10% of all sales during that meet will come back to Long Beach Police Department. And also, they'll be making, they've already made a generous donation of $5,000 to Long Beach Police Department, but the goal is to raise much more. That is for the current and future needs for the Marine Patrol Unit. That's our boat patrol unit that goes out on our lakefront every year. So I had to encourage everybody to come out from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at H&amp;S Services. And I thank H&amp;S Services owners, Rob and Angie Hughley, and also Dan Healy with Healy's Landscaping. He has partnered with them. And Dan has made a generous donation as well. So both of them, they reached out to us and asked to do this for the Police Department, so we're very grateful of their donation. Building, let's see here, the Long Beach Town Hall has been giving me some heartburn over the last month. So I'll just kind of give you a rundown of some of the things with the Town Hall. Our backflow preventer out in the garage, which is the backflow prevention for the water service coming into the building. It failed its annual inspection. We kind of suspected that because we had built in like $3,500 in the capital plan this year, knowing it was aging, over 20-some years old, and in fact, it failed this year. So we just got the parts on order. That's going to be $1,800 to fix that, which is under our $3,500 budget. The water heater in the Town Hall, the gas valve went out last week as well. We're getting that repaired rather than getting the whole water heater replaced. The GFI that controls the sun pump in the basement, with all the rainfall that we've been having, the GFI went out on our sun pump. So today, we had electricians in. We got that taken care of. Couple sprinkler heads outside the Town Hall. We're addressing those. And then lastly, we replaced ceiling tile in the ladies locker room here in the Town Hall. We were able to do that for about $100. I took one afternoon and just went in there and worked on it myself with $100 to replace all the ceiling tile. It was damaged from previous rainfalls from several years ago. Aside from that, the reason I bring that up is as we work on the 2025 budget, one of the line items I'll be looking at increasing next year's budget will be the building maintenance for the Town Hall. It's going to be 22 years since this building was last renovated. It's starting to show its age in a few spots, and we've got furnaces and air conditioners and other things that need to be addressed. Aside from that, that's all I have on the Town Administration side of this.
Thank you. Volunteer Party Department, it's Tom here.
Yeah.
Dave, this one.
Good evening, everyone. Tom, I volunteer to give this report because he wanted to stay because we're doing incident command training in the new facility, so I volunteer. This is activity year-to-date through April 30th. We stand, both medical and fire, 52 calls this year compared to 51 calls last year, which is an interesting fact. During the month of April, on the fire side, we had a hazardous condition call, which it might have been a gas leak or carbon monoxide or a power line issue. Three false alarms, and we were on standby for a mutual aid call. And the average turnout for these calls stands at seven. On medical side, we had seven calls for the month. We had a heart attack. We had three injury, two sick person, and an unconscious victim. Turnout per medical call, five members for each call. Response time is still holy. For the fire, it's 4.46 minutes, and medical is 3.5 minutes. And hours donated to the town by membership stands at 9:30 right now. Couple of other things. We moved from the street department into the new station base earlier this month. And I'd like to say thank you to Brent and Tom and Craig for allowing us to sort of make our home temporary in that facility. They were very gracious. We, we're in the new building. We do not have running water. We're not using the restroom facilities. We do have running water for the fire suppression system. And in the bays where the water does not go into the septic system, so we're observing that issue, I think, fairly well. We've done a fair amount of training. We've done some Long Beach rescue scenarios. We were at the old school going through that facility this month. We have a NIVSTO electric school for our membership, and as I said, we're doing incident command tonight. We're also doing firefighter one and two. We've started this course, and it will probably go until the middle of July. And this is the certification for our members to be the same certification level that a paid or career firefighter would have. Tonight, as Mark said, and I commented to Mark and the other officers, and we're there. In my 40 years on this department, it's the first time that I've been part of a process where the entire police force and some officers from the Fire Department met and discussed how to handle certain scenarios. And I thank Mark, and I'm going to thank you again, because it was impressive, the dialogue and everything else. It all comes down to communication. If you're not communicating, you're setting yourself off to war problems. We've had a work crew working inside the building up on the mezzanine level. We've been doing some drywall work. We've been doing some painting. And the Fire Department, with funds, is going to be putting, quote, indoor/outdoor carpet down for that flooring upstairs, which I think is good. And Tom has the landscape on the north side of the building is a to-be-determined, correct? That concludes the Fire Department report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any fire commission, Dave?
No. No, and I'm here.
Thank you. Public Works, Chief, do you want to do that one?
Public Works met on April 22nd. We discussed an update on the water service project, and it is all complete. Was doing some final restoration work along Lake Shore Drive, and we're waiting on the final invoice when it come in from the contractor, Woodruff and Sons. Stop 17 project also is done. Waiting on some of the final invoicing to come in from that. And then, as discussed earlier, I gave an update on the boardwalk at Stop 18. Budget, they did some forecast. It is needed for 2026 and 2027. And the capital plan, as it relates to the paving project, which will be a three-year, possibly a three-year, two- to three-year project to do the paving along Lake Shore Drive from Stop 13 to 31. We also there was a discussion of a need or no need to widen the existing roadway along the Lake Shore Drive corridor. That'll be a decision that the council will have to make in the future as the engineering begins for the Lake Shore Drive paving project in the future years. That is because right now, it's a pretty narrow roadway with some of the roadway encroachments, but that'll be a discussion the council will have to have in the future meeting. Reminder that all irrigation systems in the Long Beach community must have their backflow inspection completed before a contractor or homeowner turns on their irrigation systems annually. By ordinance, all contractors cannot turn these on without the backflow inspection being completed. The May meeting will be canceled because it falls on Memorial Day, and the Public Works will meet again on Monday, June 24th.
Thank you. Park Board, Zach?
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we met on April the 23rd. Beach cleanup was a huge success this year. We benefited a lot from having the Civic Association join us for publicity, and they had a lot of volunteers that came out to mutualize as well. Chief Swistec, as always, him and his whole department did an amazing job picking all that garbage up and bringing it up to the top of the stop. So we couldn't have done it without them and without Tom Dolph helping with the cleanup on Monday. So a really good event this year, probably maybe two or three times upon people we've had in previous years. We continue to work with an outside company who's managing the Friday minis at Stop 19, so you're going to start to see dune grass planted at Stop 19 now. That'll hopefully start coming up and taking over. That work's going to continue for the balance of this year and possibly a little bit into next year. We've got building permits secured for revitalizing the Memorial Garden and the park, along with the area near the pavilion out here by the bulletin board. So that work is going to begin shortly. We've got blocks picked out. We've got colors picked out, and Healy's is going to do the work for us on the pavilion or on the Memorial Garden. And Service Camp is going to do the work by the sign over here. So you're going to start seeing some work done there, and we'll get it done well before July 4th is the goal. It's all legend, of course. Summer camp starts June the 17th. It's going to run through August 2nd. We've got two councilor positions that are left to be filled. The new tennis coach has been hired. Movie in the park is going to be July the 3rd, as it always is alongside the Ice Cream Social. Sarah has cookie-making classes and a jewelry-making class ongoing, and you can get that information on Facebook or on her, I think she sends out emails as well. We're finalizing plans. We're working on tennis courts. This has been a topic for a while, these tennis courts, on resurfacing them or redoing them. So we definitely cannot afford to do anything other than just fill cracks and paint this year. That usually lasts two to three years. It's never done better than that, so there are some cracks out there. It's not dangerous, in my opinion. It's not great for playing tennis. It's not great for playing pickleball, but those cracks can be filled. And then, aren't, and the other vendor we had came, come out, said that it's about time that we look at replacing our courts entirely, which is a significant expense. So that's something that we wouldn't have in our budget. We're going to have to get some help from the town with that one. So our plan is to put together a proposal for the Town Council. We'll come in the next couple of months with the overall scope, maybe some renderings from architects. But we want to replace these two courts and possibly even expand and put another set of pickleball courts to the east of where we have our courts today. If we can do that without damaging too many trees in that area, I think that would be, that would be well-used by the town. So it's probably going to be in the $250,000 ballpark, I think, for all of that, maybe a little bit more if we add the additional court. But it's one of our most utilized assets in the town. So hopefully, we can get some cooperation on funding and figure out how we can do it, but that'll be like a three-year project. So we'll do the project this year to fill cracks and repaint or spot paint with the expectation that in the next two to three years, we'll be replacing the courts. Okay, Tom Dolph and the Street Department cleaned up the Ford River surface at Melrose Park. If that's not really Tom's to do, but I really appreciate that doing that, so that work was finished this week. We are working on finalizing part of the park vendors. The date for that is going to be July the 27th. And then the last thing on the list, this has been discussed in the Park Board for the last several months. It actually has been a couple of years since the initial issue began. But the homeowners of 28, 26, Lake Shore Drive have planted 12 or 13 trees, 12 to 13, meaning the 13th one may or may not be right on the property line. But they are clearly right in the Long Beach-owned area at Stop 29 on the west side of the stop. I've got some pictures there for you guys. I've got a survey that we did. So I met with the homeowner, along with John Wall at the time. He was on the council at the time of this initial meeting. And the homeowner realized and recognized that the trees were planted on property, said he would remove them. We want to put up a split row fence to delineate the property line. The biz is okay with that, too. If you ask for different style fence, that's fine. We agreed to work with them. We agreed to work with them on what we could plant in lieu of the trees that we want to take out that he planted. He was fine with that, too. So we've had two face-to-face meetings. We've had several exchanges of emails. We're kind of at a standstill. It's been a while. It's been many, many months since we've had a discussion. We just want those trees, all 12 of them, to be removed. They're way into our property, and they're going to become huge evergreens at some point. They're going to block the view from the boardwalk. They're going to possibly block the view even from the street. And they're planted in an area where anybody can go up there and camp or watch the sunset. We don't have any ladder way to get up there yet, but at some point in time, that's a stop we want to redo. We want the opportunity to be able to do that, so.
Zach, were these rocks always here?
They put those rocks there as well. They put landscaping rocks. They planted the trees. They've got a little path from that gravel drive area down to that big riverbed.
I mean, that's a lot of hardski.
Yeah.
I think, I know, when I was on the Park Board, we were dealing with this, and I know you've talked to him a couple of times, and I think it's time that we turn this issue over to Chris. Could you write a letter to the homeowner?
Sure. I'll reach out to Zach, and we can do particulars, and we're just, just start off with a friendly reminder of the commitment to do this and give them the time. Yeah, I mean, it's been very close to doing it throughout this process. It's just, it's time to move. You know, those trees are getting rooted. It's been a couple of years. Appreciate your help.
Do you need a motion for that? Okay.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Community Center, Anita?
Community Center met last Monday, and all the rooms in the Community Center are currently leased, and there are leases for all of the rooms. And there was just simply discussion of different financial issues that the Community Center is also, you know, an aging building that they work hard to keep up, is facing. And those, any estimates will always come to Chief, and Community Center has a dedicated group of people who work and keep it going.
Thank you. Budget and finance, Meg?
Budget and finance, right on the night, and went through the funding corrections, and then done the capital plan. Trista Hudson did a lot of the speaking for the capital plan. We kind of focused on suggestions for adjustments as the year goes on. Some of the kind of highlights of things happening, the property taxes coming in mid-June, and major projects are wrapping up, including the stormwater project and Public Safety Building. Our last large CD investment matures in the middle of June as well, and working with Trista on landing our investments based on cash flows to kind of reinvest some of our cash. And Trista is on, if you have anything you would like to discuss or add. Trista, do you have anything?
I think that was a great report. The only thing I may add is that the committee really spent some time looking at adjustments to the capital plan. Found some creative ways. For example, Tom Dolph suggested using the LEAF garbage fund to pay for the pickup truck that is included in the capital plan, which is a wonderful idea. I think it's very reasonable. That helps free up some cash for some of the other projects. We were needing to find some extra cash for the flow, and based on a few different adjustments, I think we're right on track now to be able to help accomplish everything that you as the council want to do this year.
Thank you. Trista, how many? Human Resources, JB?
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met on April 17th. We covered an employee classification question and also went through the employee handbook sections of the employment, employment status, and records section of the handbook. We'll meet additionally then, this month, May 15th, in a few days, May 15th, where we will be discussing the legal handbook review. Chris, I'd like to talk to you about that after our meeting. We sent some emails. And then on our agenda is the handbook of the employees, employment status and records section, hiring practices checklist, compensation recommendations for the clerk treasurer, compensation recommendations for the police. So we've got, we've got quite a, quite a full agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Tree Board, Ellen?
Hi, I'm here. We did not have a meeting.
We did not have a meeting this month because we really didn't have anything to talk about. The only thing that occurred was we had a nice, a generous offer from a Mr., I forget the owner's name. I'm sorry.
Rick Walker?
Yes, thank you, Meg. Yeah, Rick Walker. He, he offered to put a maple tree, a good-sized maple tree in the triangle that is at Gateway and Juneway or Golden Gate and Juneway. So I went out there with Janice Brown and we measured everything off and looked at what was in that triangle and we had, we made the decision based on what's written in our ordinance that we would have to turn down that offer. There's power lines that go directly over it, there is a fire hydrant there and also the line of sight with, you know, two paths on either side of this triangle and then going to Golden Gate, which is a, probably has a little more traffic, wasn't really a good situation for bicyclists, people with strollers and people walking as well as cars. So we thanked him very much and turned down his offer. And there was one other thing, too, the kind of tree he wanted to put in there, we only allow a couple kinds of maples to be put in the town because maples have very shallow roots and they ruin streets and sidewalks. So there's only a couple maples that we would allow to be put in there and the wires overhead would keep it from, you know, it'd be just something that we'd have to be cutting down. So we turned them down. And that's about all that's happened with the tree committee, so.
Can I make a comment? So Ellen, there was, there was a tree, I'm not sure, some people may know, but there was a small tree sapling.
Yeah, Janice and I went and looked at that. It's a red maple. They gotta have that app, so.
Somebody cracked it and half.
Someone cracked it and half. It needs to be taken out, it's dead. So.
Maybe that's a cut.
Yeah, it's, it's dead. It's too bad that someone, and the other one, we would, the other tree that's next to it, which is a service berry, I believe, we want to do something to wrap it up so it has a little bit better chance of growing, because that's even wiggling in the, in the area where it's been planted. So I don't know who put those in, it's too bad that the one with.
I do have, I do know who put those in, so that was something, I can talk to you offline if you'd like, but that tree and there are two trees near the sign, that probably all are wiggling, but that might be a possibility if Rick Walker would like to think about donating something there. I just wanted you to keep that in mind. And you and I can talk offline about the other two trees.
All right, sounds good.
Ellen, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Any progress on blast, email blast that we can send out about oak wilt to the residents?
Yeah, we are, actually, May is like oak wilt month or something like this. And Janice Brown has been working on that. She's been working on with a arborist and she should have that soon. She sends her apologies about taking so long, but she really wants it to be perfect. So, but that, I would say we should have that in a couple, within a week or two, okay? It has not been forgotten, so, but we do feel that it's very good information to give to the, the town. And yeah, and we, we had a couple trees that were on a list to be taken down and we've, we're not going to be doing those because I think a couple of, two of them were oats. Am I correct, chief, that Tom's not going to take them down now or?
That is correct. They will be held over until probably November and we'll try and get them before year end so we can take it out of the schedule.
Okay, all right, so. I would like to say one other thing. I know someone put those trees in over at the community center and that is something in the ordinance that I think they're supposed to talk to us before they put anything on town property of any kind, so.
That was a number of years ago, Ellen, and it was Brian Canier and Martha Moston. Brian was doing landscaping for the towns, he did have permission.
All right, so, but, okay. Any other information? But I will get, I will, we will get that oak wilt out, Joy, I promise.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ellen.
Is there, are we going to be opening the door for the last few minutes?
No, you missed public comments.
Oh, I missed it already?
Yes.
You leave off with that? Okay. Next time, there's one other meeting at the end of the month, right? Or a couple weeks ago? There's two meetings a month, right?
Council meetings only once a month.
And are there compliances, no compliances, council meetings or no?
Public comments at the beginning of every council meeting.
Okay, so I was thinking both, all right, two meetings a month?
One meeting a month, one meeting, the second Monday of every month is the council meeting and that's it.
Okay, so they're both open in public and we can make the final, you can determine if you can get your minute.
There's only one meeting.
Excellent, thank you. I released the phone today, but somebody could you visualize if you was by a screen?
Okay.
I'm ready to take it.
You do, thank you, Mitchell. Okay, the building commission has had two meetings since our last council meeting. They met on April 12th and May 10th. The annual MS4 report was filed and was approved by the state. I'm just going to read a list of the permits approved. Montclair Way was approved with conditions, 2104 Lake Shore Drive replaced a deck, 1700 Lake Shore Drive seawall drainage, 2303 Hazel Team, not sure what that was for, but it was approved, 2804 Lindell renovation in addition, 2101 Juneway for parking, 2964 Lake Shore Drive replacing repaired patio. We issued a temporary occupancy permit to the Long Beach Public Safety Building, 2319 Florilon for remodel, 2616 Lake Shore Drive for pool, 2965 Ridge Road for hardwood floors and 1920 Oriole Trail for a deck. Permits that were denied, 2302 Lake Shore Drive exceeded coverage, 3007 Loma Portal, they need to redesign or go back to the BZA, 3002 Northmore exceeds coverage, 1706 Lake Shore Drive for sand removal, that requires a topographic survey, and 3007 Moore Road exceeds coverage. And the building commission also recommends that the issue of septic and sprinkler components in the setback, which are not allowed in our ordinance, that that issue goes to the APC. That was it for the building commission, any questions? The BZA met last week and they had a preliminary hearing for 1514 Lake Shore Drive that was set for a public hearing by a unanimous vote next month. Okay, Advisory Plan Commission, Anita?
Advisory Plan Commission met on April 15th. We approved our minutes from the previous meeting, which was a few months prior. No old business. We did talk about review of the comprehensive plan, which was established in 2016, so that will currently, that's going to be quite a process, but the members all have copies and we're all going to be looking at it. There has been discussion of various noise ordinances in the town and that issue has gone to the police commission and we meet a week from today at 7:00 PM here.
Thank you. Building revenue report for April, Meg?
We were, number 29 permits issued, total of $12,278,000 of revenue of $14,317. Four lifting permits issued in April, total of $1,922,000. Four street cut permits with revenue of $400. Forget, do we do a motion after each of these? Probably, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Not together, just.
Okay, okay. And then legal expenses paid in April to Bridge Nelson Jades were $6,375. Accounting charges paid in April to Simon and Company were $5,286.90. And the lobbyist, Clerk of the Group LLC, who's paid $6,465 in April. And I ask for a motion to approve the revenue reports and expenses.
I make a motion to approve the revenue report and the legal expenses.
Do we do committee reports at the same time?
Yeah.
And committee reports.
Sorry.
Okay.
And committee reports.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Public Safety Building progress update, chief?
As Chief Elbers indicated earlier, both police and fire are operating the Public Safety Building since about two weeks ago. I want to talk about the septic system design. So today I spoke to Amanda Lanners at Leport County Health Department. She is aware that Soil Solutions is sending down our final application to the State of Indiana Health Department, which will have a septic design for the Public Safety Building. Initially, our application went downstate. The state sent back the requirements for the town as to what we need to meet for holding capacity, field capacity. We then, through the council, engaged a contract with Soil Solutions to do the design for the town. That work is going to be submitted this week. Amanda tells me at the Health Department, hopefully in 30 to 90 days, we will see a return from the State of Indiana with our final permit. Once we receive the permit from the State of Indiana, we will then send it out to various contractors in hopes of seeking three sealed bids. The council would then open the bids at a designated town council meeting. Once the bids are opened, one will obviously be awarded to the lowest contractor and then we will proceed with work on the new septic system for the Public Safety Building. There's been some conversation, is the Public Safety Building tying into the town hall? No. Town hall is currently on its own septic system, has a Presby drain field across the street that is only two years old. We will stay on our own system. The Public Safety Building will be on its own system as well, as designed by Soil Solutions and eventually approved by the State of Indiana. I do not foresee any construction across the street until probably sometime in late August, September at the earliest, which is good for the town because we don't want to disrupt our beautiful park during our Fourth of July activities and our busiest weeks in the town. And then aside from that, I just want everybody to know that obviously we have some events coming up. We have the June 5th open house at the Public Safety Building and then we have the Ice Cream Social on July 3rd, which is an annual event for the fire department. We will be renting two porta-pots and a hand washing station to have outback in the parking lot for everyone to utilize in lieu of the toilets not being used in the Public Safety Building. And I also assured the Health Department today that all toilets have been turned off as far as their water, the sinks, any water source over there, other than what Chief Elbers indicated earlier, and there is cardboard affixed to every single toilet in the Public Safety Building, assuring that none of those facilities are used over there. And the reason that all of you received the email today was just I needed to send something to the Health Department, just reassuring them that the town is invited by the request of the Health Department that, you know, we are not tying that septic into anything until approved and designed, so.
Thank you.
Other than that, everything in the Public Safety Building is moving along well.
Thank you. MS4 ordinance update, I haven't seen anything from Larry.
I saw Larry, he's approved it, has written, proposed. You could pass it tonight if you want to, because that takes unanimous of all members, but you could pass it on first reading if that, if you so choose, which would take a unanimous vote of those present. So my suggestion would be that you get it off the ground, so that if there's any questions or changes from any, any of you or the members that could be here tonight, you could still do that next month, but at least we'll be moving in the right direction.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the MS4 ordinance. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's first reading, so second reading will be in our next meeting. Okay, second reading of ordinance 2024-04, additional appropriations. I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance on second reading. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that ordinance passes, right?
Yes, because you passed it on first reading. I haven't, I don't know if Trista has any comment on that, I haven't been involved in that preparation, so otherwise.
Okay. Okay. I don't think so.
Tonight, tonight with second reading, as you recall, most of these funds, this was out of cash balance to support the capital plan. These monies had been building over a period of time, depending on which fund it was, you know, how long that was happening, but we will get this submitted now, I'll show Meg how to put that into Gateway and then you'll be able to finish paying up some of these bills.
Okay, thank you. New business, the comments to the council email, Meg has put together an email where you can contact council members, the clerk or the police chief, and there's going to be a link on the website and I think, Meg, are you still testing that a little?
It's on there. You're supposed to get a return email saying it was received that through the website through the computer to work, but if you actually just type this into your personal email, you do get a return email, so. And it does work, I tested it, it goes to the five council members, myself and chief. So it's been used, I don't think it's been used yet, maybe once or twice through the website, so it does work and I think it's a good way to just be heard.
Yeah, so any comments or questions or anything you have, please feel free to use the comments to the council email. Lake Shore Mechanical proposal for $47,500 to replace three heat pumps in the community center. We're going to table this. I've requested an additional quote from the community center team as well as just a quote from Lake Shore for one unit. There's one unit that is out in the gym. It's not exactly an emergency to replace, but there are new heat pumps out there that are more efficient and quieter, and that's something we've all been looking for, for heat pumps at the community center. So the plan is to hopefully try one of these new quiet ones in, in the gym, but we still need to give some different quotes, so we'll table that till the next month.
Matt, if I can add, we do just in the last day or so, I gave you two quotes, but you're correct, we would like to table this, but I hope to have a third one by your June 10th meeting. Prior to the June 10th meeting, I'll send all, hopefully three quotes to you and then ask for approval at the June 10th meeting. But we do have two quotes in so far.
Okay, great, thank you, chief. Kemp's office quote for furniture?
So the Public Safety Building, when it initially opened, the Long Beach Fire Department had purchased tables and chairs through Kemp's Office City. They went out, they sought several quotes, Kemp's came in as the lowest with a very good product. It's a quality table, quality chairs. They've been using them now for several weeks. In fact, our earlier meeting, I was sitting in the chairs over there and I will say it is a very good quality. The amount that they have purchased is not enough for us to hold a meeting of, say, 60 people, as that room is set up to hold. So what I would like to ask for permission to purchase is 12 additional tables and 30 additional chairs, which would then be kept in the large storage room there, giving the town the capacity, let's say that we had a large anticipated town council meeting, we could move our meeting there, have enough tables and chairs for everyone, or the large events such as the June 5th open house coming up. Public Safety Building is going to be in the town for the next 50 to 75 years. It's going to be hard years from now to find matching furniture for the same furniture that was recently purchased. So my proposal tonight is to spend $12,356 to purchase the additional furniture that would match the current furniture that has been bought and paid for by the fire department. The turnaround is pretty quick, we more than likely would have this before the June 5th open house, which would be exceptional. I've spoke to both Trista and Meg and I'll turn it over to Meg as far as how this could be funded through the capital outlay for 2024. Massive funds are available, so I'll turn it over to Meg.
Yes, so we're looking at paying our, the final bills. Yes, so when we're looking at paying our, the final bills for the public safety building, we are going to be using funds from our CCD, also our Little Public Safety, where some revenues will come in in June. I'll probably ask Trista to chime in if she has anything to add, or we could do an additional appropriation from CCD probably. I believe we, the AV equipment, so I don't know if we're doing anything with that anymore so at this time.
AV is on hold currently.
Right. So to me, it would be somewhat kind of put in the same places as these final public safety bills. But Trista, do you have anything to add?
Finally, please, quickly, I just don't have it right at my fingertips. The list from the fire department that was kind of a split list is what Maggie and I were calling it between what the fire department was committing to do and then what they were hoping the town would commit. Was this one of those items or no?
Yes.
It was.
Okay. In that event, we do have that money planned already in the capital plan for the portion of that list that was the town's portion, and that would be toward the bottom of page one of the capital plan. So the funds are reserved for them.
And next, again, if any additional costs were to come, or if any AV was decided upon, then we would need to appropriate some cash probably.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve this proposal for $12,356 for furniture for Public Safety Building. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion seeking authorization to purchase $150,000 F-550 truck for Public Works Chief?
So talk about the need and then talk about the funding. So the Public Works team, that being our street department and our water department, as everyone is aware, annually, we use trucks to plow roadways, to move our leaf bags, to pick up debris and roadway and large limbs, and just to do our day-to-day operations in both of those departments. The F-550 that we currently have is 12 years old. We use that truck currently to plow and salt the roadways, and we have found that the F-550 is more conducive to our roadways than two of our larger plow trucks, the big tandem trucks that we have. We can maneuver our tight roadways, our narrow neighborhoods, and our hilly roadways much better with the F-550, which is a full plow truck with a salt box on the back, and it's a four-wheel drive vehicle, and it navigates our roads well. So our street superintendent has asked to purchase a new F-550 pickup truck for plumbing operations and for leaf collection. It'll also help with, you know, trash and debris collection throughout the town. And then as we bring the new truck into the inventory, our goal is to not, hopefully, have to purchase the large plow trucks that cost $350,000 to $400,000 each. We're hoping that the smaller solution will work for our community, similar to the Town of Trail Creek. The Town of Trail Creek uses some of the small trucks as well. So the proposal tonight is to, for motion, to allow authorization to move forward with either the purchase or the ordering of a F-550 plow truck with the plow, the emergency lighting, all the other necessary equipment, and the salt box to go on the back of it. The funding would come from, and this came out of the budget finance meeting, funding for the truck would come out of the revenue that is currently in the leaf and garbage fund. Those funds can only be used specifically for items such as this one-time purchase that's before you tonight for $150,000. Trista can speak further on this, as well as Meg, Kent. I want to thank street superintendent Tom Dolph. When we first proposed this, Tom came up with the idea last week when we were struggling to find where to pull the funds from within the town. Tom says, Mark, why don't you look at the leaf and the garbage fund? He goes, you know, this is what it's used for. We have funds in there, and it was an excellent idea. Everybody agreed. So we may be able to find a truck in inventory currently that may be $140,000, and we can purchase it outright in the next month or so. Or we may have to order a truck and may not see the truck until after this year's plumbing season, which could be January or potentially March of next year. Either way, the proposal for me tonight is just allowing us the opportunities to move forward with either the purchase or the ordering of the truck. I will keep the council up to date or asking to not exceed $150,000. The last quote we got, I believe, was $142,000 to order a 2024 truck, and I'm assuming that if we had to order a 2025 edition, that we're going to pay more for a newer truck in next year's edition. So I can answer any questions that the council may have. If Trista would like to add anything as far as the funding and how this helps the capital plan by reducing some of the impact to the capital plan by pulling from the garbage and leaf fund.
Meg, do you have anything you want to add first?
Not really. I think Mark explained it well.
All right. From our perspective, we have no problem at all suggesting or agreeing that the council could use the funds from the garbage leaf fund for this purchase because of the purposes that the street department will use the truck for, which is a lot of the leaf and branch pickup occurring even all through the summertime. That balance has grown a little bit over the years in small quantities, and this is the perfect time and the perfect reason to be able to use some of that cash balance. And in doing that, not having to use the general fund or the CCD fund or something else.
Attorney Will, you reminded me of a very important aspect to add and failed to mention that the, either purchasing or the ordering of the truck will come through Sourcewell, which is the municipal government kind of outsourcing, where they go out and they seek the quotes and they make sure they're competitive, and they look for the lowest bid. So we will be following that Sourcewell program to make sure that the town receives the, either municipal government or the lowest pricing for that truck.
And just to add to that, what that does is ensures that you are in compliance with, because there are different requirements based on the price of the equipment or the purchase. So the benefit of using that statewide is it cuts out a lot of that process, and then, as chief said, it gets you the best deal as well, so you'll be in full compliance.
And Lenko, our dealer that is out of Lake County, Indiana, Lenko uses Sourcewell. They provided us with our previous trucks, and they also provide them to other municipalities like City Michigan City and other communities. So we'll make sure to follow those guidelines as well.
Okay, I'll make the motion to allow the authorization to purchase or order the truck for Public Works using the funding from the leaf and garbage funds. Do we have a second for discussion?
Did you, an amount not to exceed $150,000?
Okay, amount not to exceed $150,000?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, my question's really more about the process. The heat pumps for $47,500 was tabled because there was competitive quotes, more competitive quotes for better pricing. We're buying office furniture for $12,365, $12,365 based on a quote. Why aren't we buying and spending $150,000 or $140,000 on a vehicle on a direct quote, seeing it, loading it up with exactly what it will be, what will encompass it, all of the equipment that will be added to it, and why, why is the process different for a vehicle versus office furniture?
I can't speak for the rest of those. Sourcewell deals directly with this equipment purchase, so that falls under that state program that's available. So those others are coming from the contractors and not under this program. So this vehicle is directly under Sourcewell, and again, they, by this process, they will have done the necessary due diligence in finding the best price, or that's what's presented. And so taking out, you could go through that process, absolutely. You could decide, we're going to publish, we're going to go through, do all of those things. The guarantee behind Sourcewell is that they, that that has taken that part away in terms of making it a necessity for you.
And at what point in the process do they say, okay, F-550 comes in $137,423? Do we have to make the decision that day, or do we have a period of time for us to get together to say, okay, this is great. This is how it fits in the capital plan. This is how we're going to finance it. This is how we are going to do it. Because it feels like, right, I didn't get, this is the first time, at least to me, in somewhat a level of detail, we talked about it in the budget and finance committee in kind of a very general perspective, but haven't seen much detail. And then coming to this, coming to the council tonight and asking for the approval, seems like, I'm not sure if we're following purchasing best practices here as opposed to getting a direct quote. So back to my question is, once the, when the quote comes through, how long will we have to make a decision to pull the trigger on the vehicle?
I can add to a lot of that. So back in, even before January, we started talking about getting the new F-550 for the street department. So we began seeking quotes, which we did receive several quotes through Lenko, through Sourcewell, and that there were three trucks for about $137,000 that were in stock that, that we missed an opportunity on getting because other municipalities jumped on while they were in stock because inventory is very low for this type of truck. So by coming to the council tonight, getting the authorization allows my office and superintendent Dolph, as we go back to Lenko through Sourcewell, and they tell us that June 1st, X dealership has two of these trucks coming in, Fitz suspects that we're looking for, and then I'm ready to say, go ahead, we can get the truck. I've got authorization. Town council has approved not to exceed $150,000. We don't miss the opportunity as we've missed previously on three of the trucks that they had in stock before. I have a quote that I can share to order a 2025, I believe it was, but we wouldn't have any idea when we would receive that truck. It would be possibly sometime, you know, late, sorry, late first quarter of next year and that. So this process is no different than what we've done before. We've ran it through budget and finance in several of our meetings. We've ran it through the capital plan. We found just last week at budget and finance, we came up with an excellent idea to fully fund the truck and pay for the truck, because originally we were going to take five years financing out on this truck. We reached out, my office did reach out to Horizon Bank, spoke to Bill Gertner. I was communicating with Bill, what are we going to do if we had to finance this truck for five years? But now we found a plan where we can actually outright purchase the truck at no interest, which was going to be 6% interest if we would have financed the truck. So again, I think timing is of the essence. When we come across these vehicles, we're just looking to authorization not to exceed. Again, as soon as I get the quotes, I'd rather want immediately, within hours, the council's going to see, you know, the information from my office to you.
So I just want to be there to answer your question. You get to make the rules outside of what the state requires. So again, the benefit of Sourcewell is that it cuts out some of the process that you would otherwise, but you get to make the rules. That's what you're voting on. That's the comment here, and so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess responding back to Mark is that you make reference to three other quotes and bids. I would have liked to have seen those before. I've never seen those. I don't have a point of reference. They weren't provided in any budget and finance meetings that I've been a part of or anything prior to this. So it's, it's difficult coming into this meeting and saying, we've talked about this before. It is May, but the information, we're all new here. It's not necessarily been shared, and saying, here's the background. I want, I'd like $150,000. I would like more background. I'd like us to follow at least some consistent purchasing policies that we do for the equivalent of furniture so we have consistency.
You mentioned the heat pumps. So you mentioned the heat pumps, the furniture, and the truck. The reason we tabled the heat pumps is because it's been an ongoing issue there, and they use Lake Shore Mechanical. They came up with a estimate for three heat pumps. The discussion at the meeting was that we would, we would take that because Lake Shore has done quite a bit of the work, but the discussion after the meeting with Chief Swistec and with President Joyce Schmidt was that there are other companies available that can provide us with the same kind of heat pumps. And we then gave it to Chief Swistec to follow up on. So that's why we're trying to make sure that, that's why it was tabled, so that we can get individual quotes and we can get quotes from other companies where it didn't seem like it was going to happen. Kemp's, I know there were different quotes, and I know that they were approved with other quotes and they're a local company. And the truck at budget and finance, I mean, Trista and Meg did a, again, I know you're asking for an estimate, but Trista and Meg did an excellent job at the most recent budget and finance meeting, talking about how this money is available. And, you know, I understand you might want to see a quote, but I think that chief has had the information. And again, funding was an issue until it was, again, collaboration of the team to come up with exactly where the money is available and would be used specifically for a specific purpose, which would be for the F-550 truck.
But, but Anita, I agree with you 100%, and I saw the email that Mark wrote that said, generally, our policy is anything over $5,000, we get three bids. And, and I think that's a good purchasing policy, which is why this item was tabled, right?
I think it's to what, 5,000?
His emails, his emails, five. It's in five. So I don't know where, I don't know where our standard purchasing policy actually is.
So Sourcewell does this for us, the seeking of the quotes and getting the municipal discounts and everything. So that's why for us, when we get the quotes back from Lenko, we are a member of Sourcewell, so all of that's been vetted already. It takes the work away from us as the municipality to not have to do all that. The 5,000 that you're talking about, yes, my policy as the town administrator is anytime we're spending $5,000 or more, I want to see at least two quotes. I think by state, statute, $25,000 or more, they have, they have a minimum of three quotes.
Yeah, and I'll provide you that just in general, so you have that in the purchasing, because there are different thresholds between 25 and the upper end and then, you know, up to 150, and then what dictates where you just solicit quotes? Well, it requires publication. So that's future oriented, so that you have that.
I understand. It's just, it's, it's really, this is a process question of purchasing. Best practice question is if our policy, Mark, if it's your policy, $5,000, is it the policy of the town, anything over 5,000, we get three quotes? Because I, this Kemp's office quote, we got, we got one. I just, some standardization is really, is really what I'm asking for, is how do we purchase capital expenditures?
Going back to the Sourcewell, the process has been there bringing you the best price. If the motions change, just to get this off center, if the motions change, I mean, it could be that you're not in favor of it and it doesn't pass because you don't have a majority, right? That's one solution. The other one is that we change the motion in a second to say, you want to see all, you approve it subject to seeing the quotes that are supporting the one, the ultimate expenditure. But I know, the bottom line is that Sourcewell is doing, is giving you the result where you're doing it, and you want to see the work done to get where Sourcewell gets to this point.
Yeah, I, as a matter of policy, I like to see what we're buying and what we're spending our money for. These not to exceed numbers, I'm, I'm not a fan of it. I wasn't a fan of it. And the police... And the police, the police vehicle that was purchased earlier, where we didn't have a document, it was put in front of us. We were told we needed to buy it and was going back the next day. So.
Didn't we get extra quotes on the furniture? I thought we had several quotes on the furniture. So I keep going back to that because you said we're only looking at one, which we are. But we had quotes before when the furniture was purchased. And the reason that, for the additional quote for the water pump, heat pumps is, Lake Shore has always been the go-to at the community center because they, they're very specific over there with the cooling tower. And what happened after the meeting was that there was, again, a discussion about that Lake Shore isn't the only place. And Chief Swistec was able to reach out to some connections and find other people that do the same thing. So that's why it was tabled. It wasn't tabled just because we only had one quote and we're going to put it in front of you and say, you have to approve this.
No, and I appreciate the work that went into it to say. I saw Mark's email that said, we have, we need, we need another set of eyes on this because it looked historically, based on previous work, it looked really high.
No, it's just been changing. It's, again, prices are going, so that's why it's been changing. That's.
The thing I find a little bit different about this is that the funding comes from the LEAP and Garbage Funds. And we have a lot of money in there and it can only be spent on LEAP and Garbage. So, you know, we can put this off if you want, but I, I think we know where the money is going to come from. So in my opinion, capping it at 150,000, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, and, and want to make sure that you don't underestimate what the benefit and the commitment. There is a guarantee that Sourcewell, by using that service, are following the state requirements. There's nothing that changes in terms of having to make sure you have the best price. But you want to see the work in between that and see what the backup is. But Sourcewell is taking the work. Again, I know we've said that earlier, but that, the difference is you're taking a leap of faith essentially because you don't see that.
I mean, there, there's two questions, there's two things I have to this is, one is, does Sourcewell then do leasing of vehicles as well or just purchase?
They're just, and I'll send you information on that to outside of this.
Sure.
But, yeah, it, it is ultimately taking care statewide. It's a, a, an asset, I guess, or source of information for these purchases. Well, that purchases for the municipality.
And why didn't we use it in a purchase or lease of the, of the vehicle earlier this year?
Can't speak to that.
This is the inconsistencies, this is where the questions come from. I, I don't, I'm not trying to impugn anyone's integrity or this is a process.
Well, but I, and again, I'm, I have no doggone fight. I'm trying to help you understand. I have no idea. I don't, I don't drive the decisions, I don't make the decisions. But in that instance, the due diligence that must propose to you, it, you don't have to use Sourcewell either, right? That, it has been used a few times. That, that's all I can say for that. In this instance, with this truck, that is what Sourcewell's charged is to make sure that anything that is brought before you has been, the price has been obtained in compliance. The rest I can't, the purchase of the vehicle, same way. That fell within the guidelines, meaning you did it legally. Now, was it the best price? I can't speak to that. I don't know. That's for the decision makers and the town administrator to discuss.
Yeah, I, I, the concept of to which this vehicle, the process of someone going out and doing the work, finding us the best price, sounds fantastic. It, it ensures that taxpayer dollars are being utilized to the, to the greatest extent. There may be a huge bucket of money here. Great, but let's get the biggest bang for our buck. Sounds fantastic.
I think we have a motion on the table, Joy.
Right, but we need a unanimous decision, is that correct?
Yes, because there's only three of you here.
Okay, get a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nope.
Okay, doesn't pass? Housen Associates invoice number 2024361-01 for $1,384.45 for the CCMG grant application. I would move to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Housen Associates invoice number 2024355-03 for $3,650, the 2022-1 CCMG update and St. Morris Avenue improvement. Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Housen Associates invoice number 2023336-11 for $3,381.90, stop 17 and 18 drainage project. Move to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Housen Associates invoice 202316-09 for $11,422.25, water services replacement project. I would move to approve. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Holiday Construction Group change order number 005R
I can kind of give an explanation on that one. As far as item one is for the installation of the exterior lights at the flagpole installation, that means the three flagpoles, for $4,966.78. Just as a reminder, Long Beach Civic Association donated $5,500 towards the flagpole installation and the lighting. So some of that funding will come from Civic. Item two was to add fabrication and install a trolley beam, which is more or less a poist in the apparatus bay. That is installed and operational for $4,128. Item three was to add and demo and rebuild a six-foot wall in the laundry room, changed it to an eight-foot tall wall with posts for the locker installation. That modification was $1,165 for the construction work. And then the final item, item four, was to add and remove or replace a section of damaged concrete. That pavement work was done back on March 19th. Total sum was $2,177.11. Explanation on that, it was a very unfortunate accident. It was on the Friday where we received over 30-some inches of snow. Our plumbing crew, unfamiliar with the back parking lot, while plumbing the back parking lot, under 30 inches of snow struck a section of concrete. Because the concrete was raised, because the vinyl layer of asphalt in the parking lot was not yet installed. They felt very bad about it, obviously got jolted in the truck, reported it to me immediately. The concrete was damaged, therefore we had to replace it for $2,177.11. Grand total of $13,183.10 for the change order.
I would move to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question, point, point of clarification here, going back historically. Do we have a number for a do not exceed on this building? Why do I, why is 3.2 sitting as historically going back to discussions eight, 10 months ago when change orders coming through? Am I?
The contract Solomon made, you can jump in right now, is $3,187,629.15. So we're, we're under the 3.2 that you're speaking of.
I'm just wondering if there's a resolution by a previous council.
I'm almost speaking from recollection. There's no resolution, there isn't any formal, there were statements by previous council members that they weren't going to vote for one more thing above what the contract price was.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're, Mr. Johnson, for instance, was very adamant that this was the price, but since then, many change orders have been approved. I don't know what the total is to date, but probably an important figure to know.
I do have the totals and if anyone wants to discuss them. They were part of the packet sent out with what we're going to get to next. That final number 13, that is what we do. Do you want me to go over the totals?
It's up to the council president.
I don't think so. It was shady, wanted to say. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Holiday Construction Group invoice number 13 for the public safety building. Make a motion to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Barnes and Thor's are LLP outstanding invoices. These are legal fees and I think we just wanted to state publicly and make a motion that this council does not intend to pay legal fees, these particular legal fees that were accrued after the last clerk left office. So I would make that motion. Do we have a second for discussion?
Sorry, after your second.
Second for discussion?
Second.
I, I just want to clarify, they weren't accrued, but they, they've come, they've inquired about them, these legal fees. And then the council, the previous council's position is that these fees exceeded what the budget was for the clerk's office, which was $5,000 and greatly exceeded after Barnes and Thor was on notice of that.
Okay. But there were, there were also expenses or fees that were paid in addition to the $5,000 budget. There were a couple thousand if I recall.
I would advise you that we don't need to have much discussion.
Right.
Other than, then if they decide they want to try to collect them and take legal action, they will. If they don't, or they decide to visit the, the previous clerk, they can. But really, it has to come to a point where you need to make a decision because there have been several changes.
I just would like to reiterate the point, that Barnes and Thorberg were given written notice that they will not be paid X above this amount. And they went and continued to perform services above that amount.
And to clarify, it was April of last year of when the bond issue was being finalized. And council at that time was made aware that specifically that there was a budget for the clerk's office. So, you know, where that goes or what they want to do with that. But the town didn't put them on notice that we wanted to make sure, the conversation was making sure that they were not in a position where they didn't get paid because the budget was exceeded and there weren't funds that were authorized to pay those fees.
So we have a motion and a second that we, this council will not pay the outstanding invoices correctly?
Yes. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Retirees' health insurance benefits, chief?
So I'll give you a little bit of background on this. Historically, past practice for the town of Long Beach has been when a member of the Long Beach Police Department retires with 20 years of service or more, that the town was providing healthcare benefits to the employee and actually the employee and spouse upon retirement at no cost. In fact, your previous chief marshal had received those benefits up until turning the age of 6 to 5, when you were on Medicare. The council, I'm going to read to you, back on August 9th of 2021, this topic came up in front of the town council and the HR committee back then had reviewed the discussion as to retirement health insurance benefits. And on August 9th, 2021, the town council minutes read, Councilwoman Mary Lou McFadden reported that the Human Resource Committee has completed and been working on this since last year. The town currently pays 100% for retirees. The Human Resource Committee recommends that for all future public safety employees with 20 years of service and who are full-time on the date of their retirement, the town will pay half of the applicable fees for the employee until the employee's eligibility terminates or until the employee has health insurance benefits from other employment. The town will not be responsible for any payments to the employee's HSA savings account. Council President Bob LaMay moved to accept the motion as written. Mary Lou McFadden seconded and the motion passed unanimously. So April 10th of this year, police employee retires after 26 years of service, did, was offered and did not take the town's healthcare benefit. However, we felt this was important enough that when we had researched the previous decision back in 2021, we couldn't find where it was memorialized anywhere in a resolution or an ordinance. So we felt it's important to bring this topic back to the town council for discussion. My recommendation after speaking to Meg is that our recommendation is that either a future resolution be drafted to memorialize this decision. And then also, the current council may choose to amend the previous decision for 2021 and/or may kick this back to the HR committee for review and have the HR committee bring forward a recommendation by your future council meetings. But either way, we thought this was important to bring it to you tonight on your new business for discussion, to see what the council would like to do. And then I think it's very important, again, that we memorialize a decision in the future. By law, communities, cities and towns are required to provide healthcare benefits to police and firefighters who retire. However, what that means is that you have to make the benefit available to them, but it doesn't mean that you have to pay anything. It just means you have to make it available to them. So some communities, I believe the county follows what City of Michigan City does. The City of Michigan City requires the retired firefighter or the retired policeman to pay one-third of the city's monthly fee for the insurance. So if it's $2,100, the retired firefighter or police officer is paying $700 a month as their share of that retirement benefit. And they can only stay on until they're 65 years old. Or if they take another employment prior to 65 and that employer offers healthcare benefits, they must take that employer's benefit and they cannot remain on the previous healthcare. So it's a decision for the council to see how you'd like to proceed moving forward with this. Because currently, if we go back to 2021, our past practice is the employee would pay half of the monthly fee. So let's just say it's $2,000, the employee would pay $1,000. And right now, we have no one on it. But we just want to prepare in case we have an employee that was to retire 20 years of service or more. And we'll tell you, your longevity of your police department, your most senior person right now has five years of service. So you've got 15 years to think about this. But I think more than that, we get this on books now.
I would make a motion that we send it to the ACR committee and get a recommendation from them. Second for discussion?
Yeah, second.
All in favors, do you want any discussion?
No, I just, I'm making everything.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Council comments?
I do have comments.
Goodness, calling on you.
I know. Hi, everybody. Thank you all for coming here. I just wanted to talk a little bit about what Dave Albert has talked about. And I love that he mentions his 40 years. The words communication and dialogue came up with Dave. And particularly with the fire and police and how well they're working together. And it all goes, you know, to the public safety building where they have the room, they have the space. Dave was instrumental in that gen wall. So, and now with the added police with Chief Swistec. And you just see the collaboration, the communication. And you just see the collaboration, the communication and the dialogue. At the most recent Budget and Finance meeting, and if you have questions about any of the funding in the town, come to a Budget and Finance meeting. Our, our current and newer clerk treasurer, Matt Collins, is going into her fifth month and is working well with the deputy clerk and another person in the office, Laurel, and with Trista Hudson of Sender and Company. And it goes back to collaboration. The meeting, there are documents, they're up to date. They were the end of April, which is unheard of, that were given documents that show to the penny what we have, what we're coming up with, where our capital plan is. And that goes back to another collaboration, which is, Chief mentioned Tom Dolph with the Street Department, who's been here over 30 years. And that Tom is, is always helpful. He's a, he's a quiet guy. He's always looking to help. And again, collaboration with the, with the town administrator, collaboration with Budget and Finance. And I just continue to see that, the communication, the dialogue. Things are, are open here. The fact that we're having an open house, we're having our July 4th holidays come up. I, I want to point out also the park board because they are one of the hardest working boards in your town. Anything that you see that, that looks improved usually has their handprint on it. And Zach Neff is working with three new park board members. And we are lucky to have people who stepped up, Paul, in particular for money and for two of the other people on the park board. And it goes back to communication and dialogue. Zach is excellent at working with people. The tree issue that came up at stop 29, he's been working in a very non-combative way with the homeowner and maybe it'll just take a little bit of a nudge. But I cannot tell you how refreshing it is that I go to different meetings and you see people just talking together. There's, there's documents. You, you sense the difference in the town hall when you come in. So I just want to say thank you to the, to the people who are here, people who are on Zoom. And I just want you to know that we, we on the council and the police, the fire in your town, you were really trying to keep working for you. So thank you for coming. Thank you, Anita. Any more council comments?
Well, claims approval, Meg?
Town checks number 20661-2071, total of $876,858.18. Water checks number 54967, voided one, that's one. And 54973, 54996, total of $122,188.18. April payroll of $6,737.14. So I can have a motion to approve.
We'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at 8:32.
All in favor say aye. We're all second.
Second, aye, yes.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.